Good evening, everyone. It is May 19th, and I hereby call to order this month's meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Just want to comment on one thing you may observe, which is we are not wearing masks. The Governor gave different new guidance just today, and because we assembled here are all vaccinated, we conform to that guidance. We're still spread out a little bit here in our big meeting room, but so that's why after months of seeing us wrapped up, we're unwrapped. Let's say the pledge for the masks off, shall we? To pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you very much. We'll start with a Village Clerk's report. Clerk Bruno, please.
In the past month since our April meeting, two payrolls were processed by our Treasurer this day. Five hundred and sixty trash tags were sold, and Lowerdale, our deputy clerk, continues to work remotely with planning its own boards. She steps in from time to time to visit and collect all her materials. That's about it.
Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Trustees, we have two sets of minutes in your binders. This is the April 21st regular meeting minutes and the minutes from last week's May 12th workshop. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved. Moving on to Treasurer's report. This month, we spent $75,482.99. Seventy-five, four, eighty-two, ninety-nine. Want to thank Treasurer Day for producing this every month. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's report is approved. I knew what was gonna happen. Got the fans on this agenda, so we scoot around this table throughout the meeting. Here we go. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We expect to soon be having a zoning report in this position in the agenda. Our new building inspector, coenforcement officer, Larisa Delongo, had quite a backlog to engage with, and so we didn't ask for her report this month, and rather have her actually getting to those permits and COs and whatnot, but we will have it for next month. Moving into regular business, we have two resolutions establishing public hearings. First one is to establish a date for a public hearing regarding adoption of Local Law A proposed in 2021, which is a local law amending and restating Chapter 20, the Code of Ethics of the Code of the Village of Tivoli. We adhere to our Code of Ethics, and we go over it usually every year at the reorg, although we had two reorgs this in the last 12 months. And the language in that is very old and heavily gendered towards the male, and a lot of pronouns that sound pretty antiquated in this time we're living in. So we would very much like to modernize that and get it where it ought to be. So it actually involves a law, so we're gonna do it, because that stuff's important. So the law will be available to be reviewed for the public hearing, but we need to actually just set the public hearing first, and we're proposing to do that for Wednesday, June 9th, at 7:00 PM. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion to establish a public hearing, June 9th, 7:00 PM, on the adoption of Local Law A proposed, restating the Code of Ethics. And I will add, weather permitting, it has been very hard rain not to do this. We're gonna have a public hearing at the American Legion Pavilion outside, so we can accommodate more people more comfortably, and even in a drizzle, we'll still be there, so yes?
Will we finish the regular board meeting outside?
Sorry?
Will we finish the regular board meeting outside afterwards?
On the 9th?
Yeah. Oh, the 9th isn't your regular board meeting.
It's in work.
Yeah, it's just a following. But we'll see. I mean, we might have more outside. We've got a couple nice pavilions around here. Yeah, we'll see. All right. If that's our motion, we have a motion. So Deputy Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Azrati?
Aye.
And Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that's our public hearing on the 9th at the American Legion Pavilion. Our next agenda item is similar, but this is a public hearing on a local law amending Section 212-5 of the Village Code regarding regulations for parking, standing, and stopping. And we propose to do that public hearing also on the 9th immediately after, so we'll say 7:15, but if we spend more time talking about the antiquated pronouns in the Code of Ethics, then you know, the parking public hearing will start soon thereafter. Is there anything else we want to say about this particular law council? This is a clerical event that happened. This was an old law from 2011 that was, had some parts filed incorrectly, and we actually have to get them correct, so we caught a mistake, and we're gonna fix it. It's not a new law. Basically, it's trying to get the old law properly filed. Is there a motion to set that public hearing for June 9th, 7:00 PM, or excuse me, 7:15, on the parking, standing, and stopping? That was Trustee Baldino, is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Azrati? Any further discussion? Roll call. Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Azrati?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I'll also vote aye. So we hope to see you for the public hearings outside on the 9th. And our third item this evening, we have a resolution authorizing the creation of a firehouse expansion capital reserve fund and authorizing the deposit therein of not to exceed $3 million, subject to permissive referendum. That was enough. What did I say? So, Tivoli has the ambition to expand the old 1985 firehouse. As I think everyone is aware, and we've been talking throughout the year, Tivoli Fire Company is just thriving in the recent years, certainly since the fire of July of 2019, under the leadership of Chief Philodran and so many members of our fire company, some of whom are gonna be honored for half a century later this week. Service is fabulous. The building's too small, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of equipment, the requirements, all sorts of state and federal requirements for safety, things, there's a lot more attention being paid to the level of carcinogens that our firefighters are exposed to in their work, and therefore the need for showers and getting that stuff off of you when you return from a scene. You know, there are just more and more requirements that that facility is having a hard time keeping up with and housing all the equipment, et cetera. So the fire company and the village board, you know, will be talking until we get it done about the needs to expand this firehouse, but one of the first things we need to do is set up a designated fund here at the village, so that when we go chasing all sorts of public money to pay for what we expect to be about a $3 million project, it goes into a designated place, everyone knows what it's for and where it is, because we're talking about a lot of money here. So this would be to establish that fund. And Chris, could I ask you to speak to the permissive referendum aspect of this?
So when you set up a reserve fund, it is set aside for either a particular purpose or a general purpose. If it's set aside for a particular purpose such as this, where you're actually saying it's for the firehouse expansion, then the procedure is to adopt a resolution subject to permissive referendum, and then once it's established, the resolution, excuse me, the reserve can be used only for that thing unless, you know, we're to do another resolution subject to permissive referendum to change that.
Okay. And the permissive referendum period is 30 days. Trustees, do we have any more questions on this before we?
I, they've moved the resolution.
All right. Moved by Trustee Azrati, is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Schneider? Okay. Roll call, please. Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Azrati?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The permissive referendum period will begin?
Tonight?
Tonight.
30 days begins from our adoption.
Okay.
And?
And the resolution is adopted. We hope to create that fund, subject to permissive referendum, and you know, it's a big lift for the little village, but you know, we're very proud and grateful of our first responders here and the fact that the enrollment is growing. We now have 20 interior firefighters in this department, which has never been the case before, and it's just remarkable, and they do so much for us, so I hope that this community can get them the facility they need to keep doing this important work. And the final item on the agenda is the tax warrant. Village tax bills go out and are due in June, is that correct?
July.
July 1st, they're due, they go out in January. So this is a resolu-, excuse me, a motion to authorize and in fact command the Treasurer to receive and collect the taxes, and the current tax amount is $493,493. So, please, would you like to move this?
I've moved the resolution.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
That was moved by Trustee Azrati, seconded by Trustee Baldino. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the Treasurer is hereby commanded to receive and collect from the several persons' names in the tax roll, here to annex several stumps stated in the last column here of opposite their respective names, being a total of $493 and $493 for the following service, current budget. All right. Our next board meeting will be held Wednesday, June 16th, at 7:00 PM, the workshop at 6:00 PM here at the historic Ossisfeister Hall, and the regular workshop, June 9th, at 7:00 PM. And again, because of those two public hearings, we're gonna convene over here at the Legion Pavilion, unless there's an absolute tempest, I believe we'll reconsider. Moving on to committee reports, Trustee Azrati?
Yes, since we've been highlighting the two fronts of our fire department, I'd like to just report a little bit about the Olympic Service Award program, which we created back in 2008, which enables each firefighter in a given year to be awarded $500 on having met certain criteria, mostly based on calls they've been on, training that they've participated in, meetings that they've attended, et cetera. And this, in this particular year, we had 26 firefighters who qualified for that, and so out of our tax funds, we contributed $13,000 to a fund at RBC Wealth Management, which invests those funds. And they, our ambition for those funds back in 2008, which was, if anybody follows the markets, was not a very auspicious time to start an investment pool, was to earn 6% of those funds. And then maybe five years ago, we realized that we didn't have very many firefighters who were gonna earn their rewards within the next three to five years, so we could be a little more aggressive, and we increased the aggressiveness of the investment project. Ending in March 2020, if any of you watched the markets, you know that year ended the 12-month period was pretty strong in the markets, and this fund earned almost 30% for around 12 months. Its long-term return is 6%, so over that whole period, and in the last five years, it has had almost a 7.5% return. So we're pretty satisfied with that result, and I think it's Ralph Torche is turning, is he turning 65, as you know, I think he already returned. Anyway, on your 65th birthday as a firefighter, you actually redeemed those funds, and for those who get in at 30, it can be a piece of change by the time you retire from the very markets, you'll be proud of that property.
Thank you, Trustee Azrati. That's all good news. Trustee Schneider, please.
So the Village of Tivoli Justice Court report for the month of April, charges disposed to total 10, charges received a total of 2, and 1,105 dollars was collected and remitted to our state control.
Thank you. There's a lot of vehicular stuff in there, stop signs, a little speeding, so watch those rolling stops, everybody, stop a little bit. Trustee Baldino, did you have anything you want to say?
So I don't really have anything to say yet.
Okay.
On the topic of traffic?
Yeah.
I kind of would like to be the cheerleader of, please stop making K-turns in town. I've just spoken nicely to many people since I've lived here, and it's pretty dangerous, it doesn't look good, it doesn't set a good example for visitors here on weekends, especially outside this post office in the morning when there's a lot of activity. So please, 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 go around Pine Street, find a park, it's actually pretty easy.
Yeah, it's easier to go around the Little Block than trying to do a K-turn in the middle of Broadway, so.
Male driver is laughing.
Deputy Mayor Major?
Well, I hope this will be fun, everybody.
Would be your birthday.
It's true, I kind of remember. So Saturday is a big day for the library. It's Community Shred Day! So all your old love letters, all your, what, homework assignments from second grade, incriminating evidence, bring it to the library between 3:00 and 2:00 on Saturday.
Senior project.
Senior project, yeah. And another fun thing that's going on at the library the next couple Fridays is a Bollywood dance workshop led by Ruby, who many of you know, who can spend any time heading up the library. She's gonna be doing that Fridays from 6:00 to 7:00. One of the great rites of spring passages, good weather's here, and the first Humpies on the Hudson event is taking place at Clunamont on May 27th, at 6:00 PM, and it's singer-songwriter Amy E. B., who's apparently pretty good. And you can come and bring a picnic and sit by the river and, you know, stay, you know, as safe apart as we are supposed to now, and just get out and act like it's normal. Maybe there's some of the lilacs will still be smelling good down there, so check it out. Historic Red Hook has an author talk, I think tomorrow night, which is virtual, but it's with Richard Barbuto, who has written a book about the War of 1812 and the role of New York in 1812. His talk is gonna be about what the sort of local implications were, because 1812's been here in Rhinebeck and Red Hook, because it was when Red Hook separated from Rhinebeck and became, you know, an independent municipality, and the Great Rivalry began. And it was also the second time that the United States stepped into the ring of Great Britain. So it'll be interesting. So check it out online. And no word yet on dock in the bays, which, you know, would be nice.
It's been a lot of good weather, I think.
It's been, it's been a lot of good weather, and you can launch a kayak out of, you know, at the canoe launch, the Earthwell canoe launch, just be prepared for mud up to your knees. So hopefully there'll be some wind on that this season, and, but get out there and enjoy it. There's lots of, lots of animal activity, birds, things to see and smell. I think it's like Russian hollow or spice bush, there's something in the bay that smells amazing right now. So go check it out, watch out for ticks, and mind the poison ivy.
I almost reached my light blue shirt, it's dark blue. We stopped talking about this.
I know, we have.
Yeah, we almost had a mishap. I have a number of things in no particular order. I would like to welcome to the Village of Tivoli Josh Sella, who has just joined the Department of Public Works. Josh worked for us a few years ago as a summertime mower person, and made an impression on me at that time for his work ethic. So today was his first day, it was a good hot one, and he was out there weed whacker with Ralph, and just really glad to have him. It's been a little challenging in DPW lately, and of course, we had so much rain, the grass got so high. They made a lot of progress in the last couple days, but we'll keep that up, so welcome We have had a meeting, and we are talking about the bringing back the Tivoli Children's Rec Camp, which we didn't have last summer. Trustee Baldino and I, and Lowerdale Tyler, who's our deputy clerk and president of the Tivoli Freed Library, are meeting to try and get that off the ground. We don't really have any details yet, so this is kind of a save the dates announcement. Middle of August, like maybe second two weeks of August, the day, something like 9:00 to 2:00, which is what we did two years ago, last time we had the camp. So we have a lot of bureaucratic work to do with the county, the Board of Health, to get that ready, so we're not ready to take enrollment yet, but we want to let you know that we're gonna do everything we can to indeed bring the camp back this summer in August. Another thing we didn't get to do last August that we will be working on is the Annual Cleanup Day, exceedingly popular event, so hopefully we'll be telling you more about that in a month or two. Also, this is where we have a hauler come in, and you get to put out all those large items that are difficult to dispose up throughout the year, and for a flat reasonable rate, somewhere in the $30 or $40 range, you can get that stuff picked up. So a lot of people missed that last year, so I have two years of items saved up, but we do intend to do that event again in August. Also, going around picking up things curbside, the village is able to pick up paper, just to say biodegradable bags, of leaves and grass clippings only. We are getting a lot of sticks, branches, logs, large brush type stuff, and unfortunately, the Village of Tivoli does not have any capacity to take those things, and if you add them to your bag of grass and leaves, they will get left on the curb. So DPW has told me they've been seeing more of this, want to remind everyone, we're glad we're able to take your grass and leaves, but please keep the sticks out of those bags. Thank you. Tivoli applied for two grants this week. I'm gonna get my acronym wrong. The MIG, which used to be the Municipal Innovation Grant?
I think it's Investment.
And now it's Municipal Investment Grant.
Yeah, I think so.
So we can still say MIG, but we submitted two applications, both for generators, one for a generator to go with the sewer plant, and one for a generator to go with this building, Village Hall. So I know a lot of other municipalities apply for generators and other things, we'll see how we do, but fingers crossed. And I want to thank Deputy Mayor for working on one of those grants last week. The water project is, you know, really mostly done on Broadway, there are a few small areas of lawn restoration yet to happen, and there's a backwater on the red paint for the last two crosswalks at Pine Street and Clay Hill. But other than that, it's finished. There's been a little bit of confusion among residents about what areas we're getting paved or not paved, so the rationale there is the paving is also part of the grant funding for the project, and we're only allowed to repave areas that were actually disturbed by putting in the water main in the road. So it's only those areas which include the shoulder of woods, the south lane of Broadway, and so that's, that's all the paving that's gonna happen right now around the village. Again, the next steps, the new tank is full of water, they filled that up, it has to sit for about a month, and then there's a whole series of tests that occur, mostly relating to the fact that the inside of that steel tank is painted, and they want to make sure that the paint is being immersed and everything's fine. Standard stuff, but important to check, right? So it's likely that the new water tank will be online and holding water that will come out your tap in probably the end of June. And then after that, the old tank, 1938 tank, right out there behind me, is going to be taken down, disassembled. As I said last month, a large area of the park is gonna be closed off with a construction fence, basically the basketball court all the way to the community garden, the eastern side, so we are gonna have restricted access in the park. Right now, it looks like that's gonna be the last two weeks of June, first week of August, and we'll watch, watch it come down. It's gonna be bittersweet, I'm sure, and there've been a lot of wonderful ideas about what is going to happen with the old tower and where the old tower sat, and the answer for now is all that steel, we're not gonna make it into a restaurant or viewing platform or my idea to cut it up into a thousand, a million Tivoli keychains, so we're gonna have a piece. All that steel is going to be scrapped, and that value goes back into the water project because it will be a fair amount of money, and in order to keep the project cost as low as possible, we're gonna trade in every rusty bolt for a couple bucks to try and offset the costs that we all have to bear on that. So that's the fate of the tower. We are still moving towards our shoreline stabilization down at the Riverfront Parcel. I had another meeting today with Crawford and Associates. Amtrak has reviewed our construction plan, there's some back and forth right now, and it looks likely that that will be happening in September. And this project involves coordinating with the railroad and bringing material across the crossing at Diana Street, and building a stable shoreline on the village parcel on the western, just to say the waterside. It's a DEC-approved design, which is a small, what they call riprap, which is just a load of stones, so we're all familiar with the gigantic riprap north and south of our parcel. Our riprap's gonna be smaller, and then it's interspersed with special plantings, which help preserve the ecosystem and preserve the ground against erosion. So the combination of plants and rocks will hopefully protect our parcel from the hurricanes and the ice scouring and the wake from the channel and everything else that we've been suffering from. And the last thing I have is, Tivoli's losing a friend in public service over in the Village of Red Hook. Mayor Ed Blundell is retiring, I believe his last day is Friday, and Ed has been just the perfect collaborator as long as I've worked with him on so many topics over the years, difficult, tragic things. Difficult, tragic things that have happened in the town, aspirational things. And, you know, he always made sure to invite us to the Harsk Apperey, Tivoli would show up in our blue. Ed has just been an inspiration, he's been an exemplary small-town mayor, you know. He's just, it's not political, he just tries to get things done. He's really had the demeanor, the temperament, and the work ethic. That guy's worked so hard and gotten so much done. So I just wanna thank Ed for all the work he's done and for being such a great colleague for me and for Tivoli. And wish him all the best in the next chapter of his life, so. Well, Missy, I had to come back and visit us. Trustees?
So we're locally losing a friend and colleague as well. It's been a pleasure to serve with Jeanne Schneider, or I'm on the board. It's emotional.
It is emotional, I did say that I would announce this tonight. Try not to cry as I do it. Talking a little bit before the meeting began, one of the first tasks that I had when I was appointed to the board by Mayor Crano was to follow up on an opportunity for a grant, for a feasibility study for our water system. So the, just the fact that this has come full circle feels really amazing. And I was joking earlier, I said, "How many public servants actually get to see something like that come to fruition?" And they said, "Wait, this is Tivoli." So pretty much everybody who serves on the board, because we tend to get on the board and stick around for a really long time. For me, it's been seven years out of the over 20 that I have lived in Tivoli. It's been pure joy to call this place home. The fact that it was a choice, you know, to move here and to raise our family here. See, I'm gonna cry on camera, and I'll be crying then. So it's just, you know, certainly timing. It's a good move for my family right now, so we are relocating to the town of Red Hook. So we're moving, but not moving far, and please be sure that we will be visiting Tivoli quite often and continuing to be vested in the community. It's been a huge honor to serve with every single one of you on this board. I don't think that I could have found a more collaborative and supportive group of individuals to really have, you know, the community as their priority. We have a pretty amazing board. So thank you for that honor.
Yeah, Jeanne, you know, you give me big shoes to fill. You know, you've brought so much to this board, and I've seen different people come on and off the board. You've been a powerhouse in every way. In those tough union negotiations with me and, you know, working with various projects at the park. You know, it's what makes these communities work, is people like yourself and Ed, who do this from the heart, because they love it. There's not a lot of acclaim, there's not a lot of money, there's just that deep sense of, you know, throwing your hat in the rain, participating, helping out, and just done a great job. I'd be crying too, except I know you're gonna be right over there. And still serving on one of our committees, which you don't have to have, it doesn't have a residency requirement, so we'll know where to find you. But all the best to you and your family in this next move.
Thank you so much, I have been so proud to serve on this board.
And as the one board member who's probably served a little longer than Jeanne, I wanna just comment that what she brought to this board was a level of professionalism that raised the quality of every board member's work. Jeanne has always done her homework, she always checked out the fine print and made sure that we were doing things according to law and to the rules. And I really appreciate that because it just makes things easier when you're somebody doing all that for you.
Thank you.
You're a compassionate practice and a savage tire kicker.
I will take you.
All right, well, round of applause for trustee Crano. Tivoli, thanks for your service, for sure. All right, so we'll be back, public hearings on the ninth, and another board meeting next month. Our new festival year starts June 1, and it's great to have the masks off. And hopefully, Tivoli is gonna look forward to a great summer after a challenging year in every sense, so. Glad to thank you. So, and actually, in order to adjourn, we need to adjourn. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so 46, thanks.